Tuesday, May 27, 2025, Rosemont County Commission Meeting to Order. Say the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right, we have a little call, Commissioner Cooter, Commissioner Smith, County Clerk, Michelle Morris. Are there any additions, deletions?
I didn't.
You have anything?
I do not.
Did you have anything, Michelle?
Payroll change for Laura.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any public comments? Public hearing, none, any correspondence to us? All right, unfinished business. Deltona Hansen, you're up.
Maybe Kevin and I can combine ours, maybe.
Oh, okay.
It's my spokesperson. We talked last week, went into Kevin's office and checked out his PC. Kind of confirmed what we already knew was like a 20-year-old computer. The primary line of business software was from Star Programming that runs the Noxious Speed software that he utilizes day to day. And we got the contact information for a representative there, so if we have any issues or problems, we can kind of scope those out with them directly. We get everything configured properly. I gave them a quote and then I think I disseminated it to y'all too. So they were ready to approve that today.
So did we get, did you send that by email?
I sent it.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, I don't know if I've seen it.
Standby.
Wow, theirs is way better than the other departments.
Yes, it is. Lower, you mean?
Yeah, way lower, like $2,000 lower. You're killing me on these computers.
So Tricia had a bunch of peripherals that were attached to it. And then, I think another one was two computers. And the other one had a bunch of monitors with it, so it just kind of depends department by department whether everything's attached to it. So that's just a computer, the service contract, and now some 24-bit things on this.
Well, I would say you got your money's worth. And?
I'm ready with that, you guys are.
Yeah.
No names.
Okay. And then your fund, is that, your fund, is that like commodities or contractual or?
Yeah, commodities.
So I've moved to approve purchase order, 4,096, to Century Business Technologies, for an HP Pro Computer and additional items, in the amount of $1,984.23 to be paid out of the noxious weed commodities line item, which is 137-00-5300.
Second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion back, all right. Well, I hope you enjoy the new computer.
Yes, I've been waiting.
There'll be some things that you have to relearn that you'll be like, oh, that's how I am.
I have a question about putting CIC.
Yes.
I never had that question.
Yeah, so two or three years ago, we had, when all of the off-site departments were gonna have CIC, and then there was that additional server that was created for the off-site departments. So anybody off-site can have CIC, and that's what they remote into, that's what I remote into. So it's, however they want to do that, they recently, I had to get a different computer too, and then with the new, whatever they do on their end, it took me a week or two before they got everything, they had to figure out how to get it connected in a different way.
Well, and then CIC in your application might be a little bit different because, so it doesn't have to dedicate to your manager's office, it's a, it's easy hotspot.
Okay.
Not that all the experience will be the opposite with a CIC. It could be different, we'll see.
I mean, it's worth trying, so, I mean, CIC, they have to load CIC and do all that, but then you'd remote into that secondary, I don't know what that.
57.
Yeah, there's, the server's got a different name to it.
Correct, yeah.
I don't know. But yes, the capability's there. Why do you only have a hotspot?
It's just what was.
That's what you've always done.
When I first started, Leo never had any when I started, so I got a special cable now.
You may just need to get real internet, I mean, do you have a phone?
No, I don't have an actual phone anymore. I got rid of Brightspeed, tired of their service.
Yeah.
Anytime it rained out there, it'd crack.
Yeah, so they just contact you by cell? How do people get hold of you?
You ever count your cell phone, right?
Mm-hmm.
Don't.
And that seems to be working out, okay. Unless people know the number. Took a little getting used to.
Well, see how the connection is, but we may need internet out there.
Yeah, might have to.
Especially when he gets into driving his drones spraying stuff with those.
We can talk about that in the next lecture.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I don't think you can say that. That's our proposal. Do you want us, can you sign that? It doesn't affect me, or I can send it to you if you need to.
Do you need a copy of that, Michelle?
I'll need a copy.
Michelle, she's gonna want a copy.
It's a good segue though, internet contracts into another discussion. I did reach out to our, we have a third-party company that we work with that kind of evaluates internet service bills, I was talking with them late Friday afternoon, and they wanted to get together with you, Michelle, and ask about, they have some ways that you can, they have companies that you can work with that combine all of your internet service contracts on a single bill. And so they work with the ISPs directly so that you get sort of a single pane of glass into all your contract Brightspeed with whatever, I can't remember the other ones that you have.
QuickCom or whatever.
There's like three or four, MediaCom, there's like three or four different internet service providers, so.
I think I've studied accounts of MediaCom and like five or six of Brightspeed.
It was, it looked like over 15 accounts in total when I was looking at them. So this would summarize it into a single thing, you would know when your contract clauses are expiring, so that you can, you know, if you have one preference over another, and both Brightspeed and MediaCom have the same service running in the same building, you can pick just Brightspeed or just MediaCom and get them all combined together, so at least it's a little more manageable. You had, there's like two or three internet service bills that are over $1,000 right now a month, and so we think that there's probably efficiencies to be made, so I'll reach out and see if you'd want a time to kind of speak with them to see if that would help, so at least there's not 15 different ones that you have to pay every month, would that be better? Okay. It sounds more manageable, and it sounds like it would make things a little bit more cost effective to in the long-term than doing things like getting internet in different places that don't have internet now, potentially, so.
Okay.
And then the last thing was, we talked about it last week, was the Wi-Fi here in the courthouse configuring a private network. It sounds like we'll be able to leave your current network the way it is, the video that's connected to it now, it won't change at all. So you can just connect to like the county Wi-Fi that's right now, it will not change, we'll just add a private network and give the log details to the people who need it. And so that kind of approved last week, we'll continue to open that out and see who we need to give that information to.
I only hardwire when I come in, so that probably won't affect me then.
But it would be like Tricia and Michelle.
They have mobile devices.
Yep. Just a small change, so. So did you need a copy of this?
Yes.
I don't think I have anything else that you can else, you all have something else that you wanted to discuss.
I don't think so. Okay, so Kevin, you're done, and you're done, all right. Scott, we're down to you.
Do you, do you want to do the other couple little things before we start?
Oh, they want to do payroll? Is there anything you need with us before you start with department heads?
Okay. If I had more sense, I'd want to show you this kind of what the balances are January 1st compared to what we advise you to do, you guys kind of get to know each other.
We'll do that.
Did you want the schedule, Kevin?
Uh, this one, I think you gave it to me. Um, sorry, I thought, I thought you said Heather.
Y'all go gadget on them.
Okay, hold on a second. I gotta do this.
Excuse my printer there yesterday, and there's nobody to service it on Monday, Memorial Day. I guess I'll just leave these here for you.
Yep.
These are what we, some of these is what we, you know, where the department is with, so I'll make sure you have a copy.
That email, there's nothing that confirms.
Seen anything on that, Heather?
No, Jimmy did.
No.
We're just, okay, well, I would move to approve the.
What I forwarded you?
Payroll action form from the Treasurer's Office with the resignation of Stephanie Ray, effective.
Okay.
5/27/25.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dave?
27.
It must not, it must not, it must not forward it to you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll maybe try.
What do you? Uh, me? Let me look. No, I don't.
Okay.
That's fine, I don't need.
Let me, let me get.
It's the hardest now.
No, no problem. It's okay, thank you.
Now part of that email came through, but no attachment.
Let me, let me resend her, so I'll fire it.
Michelle, was there just that one pay order change, was that all per?
Did they bring down the bill sheet? You want that one for the book, do you have one? Oh, I thought you said it wasn't in there.
No, I thought I had it with the book.
Did Heather do a little drop cam?
No, I don't, but that was, sorry, excuse me.
Thanks, Chris. Mich- Michelle, what's the Quinimo fund?
Um, it's part of like that jurisdiction down there that the Sheriff's Department covers.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Did you have a couple things for us in advance?
Yeah. I noticed, that's why I was making this sheet there, I made a copy of that seven-year history, and on yours, I didn't circle it like I did with the department, I made those there yesterday.
Oh, do we have a copy of that?
Do you want?
Do we have a copy of that?
Uh, should I? So we should have two, we should have, I didn't give you the second one. I made it on.
All right, thank you.
Okay. It's pretty easy to do, are you ready? Okay. It's pretty easy to do, but what I did when I came up and did the training, I took this one, that's the Excel spreadsheet for seven years. And so what it is, the bold is the seven-year average of unencumbered cash, you look there on column F, the unencumbered, or the annual receipts on column F on the next page, the seven-year average of expenditures, the mill levy on the next page, and then the last page is where, Brandon and I, I'm not explaining this to you, but this is just a rule, a thumb I kind of use for now 20 years. It's the old, my dad was paying for three to six months' savings to take care of expenditure because like in the government, you can't borrow just for operating. So what this is, is this is 23, so we don't really have 24 hundreds yet, they're still working on them, but what it does, the first column is unencumbered cash at 23 on that last page, the annual expenditures, and then you divide that by 12, so column D, and then by fund, six months or three months, six months general fund, Roden Bridge, those big ones, and then compare that to where the cash is really at. So if you look at general fund, for example, you have 2.8 million in the first column, and you have six months would be 3.7 million, so you would be under by about 842,000. And this is just a rule that I've used for, like I said, probably 20 years, and it works pretty slick because it, it kind of gives you a feel. And it works pretty slick because it, it kind of gives you a feel for where you're at, mainly in the operating funds. And that's why I do general and, and road and bridge mainly. The other ones do work, but they don't work quite as well. Uh, but anyway, that, that's what this is, and so what I did for the department is, I, I thought I had your copy and I should have made it off that, but I didn't see it, but I was asking him back there. I took, and if you start on page one, I took column G, which is twenty-four numbers for the best of what we have right now. And I circled every number that is below the seven-year average on unencumbered cash. And it's, it's almost every one of them.
You circled where?
On column, on the first page. Column G is twenty-four.
I don't know how many circles.
Column G, up the top there, column G, and compare that to the bold column. The bold column is seven-year average of unencumbered cash. So almost every one of them is under. And the reason I'm starting to do this is because across the state with these different counties and cities I'm working with, we have all COVID money gone. There's no, probably going to be no federal funds coming down the track. And a lot of them have held in revenue neutral, you're one of the unique ones that still has some extra money. But some, like the county I go to tomorrow, theirs went from one point five million seven years ago down to a hundred and three thousand million this year. Because they've stayed at revenue neutral. And if you don't have other revenue sources, which that's why I don't agree with what the state's doing, because if you don't have other revenue sources and your expenditures have went up twenty, thirty percent over the last, you know, five to, five to six years, you're going to burn through cash. So that's why, that's why I do, that's, that's why I do this worksheet. So it's just, it's just a good, uh, good thing to look at. The second thing I want to show you before, uh, Kelsey steps up here, is on the budget, if you'll flip, there's a page number down the bottom. I want to show you how that, that actual, that one-one-twenty-five balance works. So if you look on page six, you'll see a red, up in the corner, you'll see a red rectangle that says three point two million. So these sheets tie to that sheet I just showed, okay? And then I went in and wrote what the actual carryover is. So like, when you're doing the budget, uh, last summer, we don't know what it's going to be by the end of the year. So we're estimating, so we were estimating it was going to be at three point two million, but when we got to the end of the year, it was two point six million. And that's very, very critical to know that because now we're starting with about six hundred thousand less than what we were anticipating. And then if you look, I just, I'm not going to take the time to go through everyone, but if you'll flip, like page, I'll do the big ones here. Page, uh, I think it was ten, no, no, keep going here. Yeah, the next one is page twelve, and this would be the, another big fund, is the road and bridge fund. Now, it's the opposite, and this is pretty common right now in the other, I do five county, I picked up another county, a new county, Lynn County way over on the east. But all of them are kind of this way right now because they can't find people to work in the road and bridge department. So what this is really showing me, when you talk, when we, when you, Ryan comes in, we'll talk about this. We were estimating it's going to be eight seventy-two, but I think he's down, I don't know when he's down here, I get them all mixed up, five, maybe five people. So we don't take those five people out of the budget, we leave them in there. So what happens is you're not spending for them, they're in there.
Right.
And that's why the carryover at one-one-twenty-five is more than the balance that we started with, uh, showing in the budget. Does that make sense? So eight seventy-two, and we got one point four million, but if you had the, if you were fully employed.
Yeah.
You would have burned through that cash. Okay? And I did that on every fund, you can look through there and you can see, most of them are, most of them are in pretty good, pretty good shape. But that's a, a key thing, because when we're starting the twenty-six budget, is to see where we, in, where we started the twenty-five year, now that we know where it's at. Okay? And what, the reason I give you, I mean, that's, it's kind of, I'm sorry about the blur and all that on there. The reason I give you this is when they come in, since you're new, I will tell you which page they're on, and then you can kind of see how the budget looks. Heather's got it somewhere, I'm sure, but. We have another worksheet, your worksheet, I call it Heather, Heather Excel spreadsheet.
I just did get it, and I just sent it up there.
Oh, it did come? Oh, okay. So it shows, uh.
There's two of them, so I can't remember which is which.
Well, it's not the, it's not the, the last one you got from Atchison, that's more of a kind of summary at the end. This is the one that shows the last four years, uh, like expenditures and receipts.
Trent.
And then it shows where we're at even to date. And Lauren, who helps me with those, she was saying that, you know, like twenty-four still is, and I'm still trying to get twenty-three figured out. Twenty-four and twenty-five to date is still, I forgot some issues, but at least it kind of gives you an idea of where they're at. She's, she's printing them, so you'll have those. Okay. There's a lot to this. A lot of, by the time you get in the mail. Okay.
Are you ready, Kelsey?
I think I emailed this to you all already.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So I, um, pretty well spell out all the changes in my budget request, um, here on the front cover sheet. This is a increase of seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars over what was approved in my twenty-five budget. Now, I don't know what you're looking at, but Michelle and I had communicated a little bit. The budget that was signed for me last year is not the amount that's reflected on those. So I think that what you guys are going to look at on his Excel spreadsheet is not actually what was approved for me last year. So I guess with that in mind, because it will look like a much larger than seventeen thousand dollar increase if you look at that budget. The bulk of the increase is indigent services, which is court-appointed attorney. Uh, this has kind of been something we've been working on since I started back here in Osage County. Um, I would say that Judge Wine would like to see the attorneys hovering somewhere in the ballpark of four hundred dollars per case, not per hour, per case. And with us appointing around three hundred to three hundred and fifty cases a year, we're still not quite there. So that, um, we.
That's because it's hard to get people.
It's impossible, yeah. Like, we're fighting, I would say, um, we are fighting against, or the county is fighting against every other county in the surrounding area. So we are, the fourth judicial district is one of the last counties to operate on panel system like we do. Almost every other county, um, in close proximity has had to switch to paying their attorneys hourly, which would certainly be a much larger number than what we're requesting, so. Um, like, I know Allen County, Lyon County, um, Shawnee, Alden, they, they worked out with an hourly system. They appoint an attorney and the attorney agrees to work for a much lesser amount than what they would regularly bill in their regular practice, but it's still an hourly wage. So it's not four hundred dollars per case, it's like a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And in some of these cases, you're talking hundreds of hours of time. So we are really trying to continue to maintain the panel, that is obviously a much better situation than the county's budget.
But you're saying, you guys think we're going to have to raise that up to get, to get people leaving and say, yeah, I'll do it?
Yeah, we've asked for a ten percent increase, um, just in an effort to continue to try to maintain the people that we have. I, I don't know that, the only quote, new people we've recruited over the last few years have just been new attorneys that have joined their family's practice.
Right.
Not new attorneys that decide, oh, we should go work in the fourth judicial district, it hasn't been that. So, um, ten percent is what we're asking for, for an increase, that's a, almost twelve thousand, eleven thousand nine hundred dollars, that's an increase. Um, legal defense, that encompasses a few different things. That encompasses conflict appointments, so anytime we have cases, so we, we, we have, I think it's six attorneys on our misdemeanor panel. And misdemeanor panel not only does traffic and criminal misdemeanors, but they also do sync child and needed care appointments. And in those type of cases, every person on the case is required to have a different attorney. So mom, dad, kid, potentially grandparents, everybody gets their own attorney. And sometimes we have cases where we have five kids and they have four or five different parents. And that requires obviously more attorneys than we have on our panel. So, um, then we have to pay a conflict appointment, so then I'm calling somebody that's not on my panel and saying, will you please take an appointment, we'll pay hourly. So then we are paying them hourly. So we budgeted some money to try to cover that. And so that's in the legal defense fund, and then psychological evaluations is also covered there. So psychological evaluations for people on misdemeanor cases, um, that require psychological evaluation that are indigent, courts are responsible for providing that. So this year alone, I've paid for four evaluations, and those ranged anywhere from seven hundred and ten dollars to thirty-one hundred dollars apiece. So I've asked for a thirty-five hundred dollar increase, again, maybe next year I won't pay for any, but I don't know that. And I would say that we have paid for more every year since I've been, been here managing the budget. Um, so I'm trying to compare for that. So that's a thirty-five hundred dollar increase, um, over, for conflict appointments and psychological evaluations. Education and training, that covers when I go to clerks' conferences, management conferences, which are required for me to attend, as well as mileage to meetings for my staff. Uh, so we've asked for a five hundred dollar increase, um, over what was requested last year, just due to the cost of lodging and mileage increasing. And then, uh, equipment rental, we've asked for a fourteen hundred dollar increase. We had to lease, we leased our copier, and we've had to lease a new one, and that just came with a price tag. Repair and maintenance, we've asked for a five hundred dollar increase. This line item is actually one that went down significantly, um, this past year because you guys opted to, actually, no, it would be the equipment rental that went down significantly. That's the one that went down significantly last year because you guys opted to purchase the computers outright instead of leasing them. Um, so that one, the equipment rental, this used to be somewhere in the thirty thousand dollar range, budget amount, and now it's six thousand. So it's a fourteen hundred dollar increase over last year, but still significantly less than where we were. And then, uh, the repair and maintenance, we asked for a five hundred dollar. This is a difficult one for me to estimate because this covers just service agreements in my office, which is our courtroom recording software. So anytime we don't have a district-level judge with a court reporter, we have to electronically record all of those. So all of our magistrate docket is electronically recorded, and, um, then anytime the court reporter's unavailable, it's electronically reported. And so this covers the service agreement for that, and then for our budgeting and attorney tracking software. And I, those lease agreements will not go back over the old until well after this budgeting process, but, um, as is everything, I'm anticipating and trying to do that to be more expensive. So I asked for five hundred dollars just to hopefully cover that.